Good evening. Welcome to City West Miami. Happy New Year. This is our first meeting of 2018, believe it or not. Today is January the 10th, 2018 at 7:45. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you. Let's rise tonight. Let's take a moment to bow our heads and pray, and pray for those that are less fortunate than we are. We pray for a blessed and healthy new year for our leadership, for our world leaders, and for peace. And especially, as we do at every meeting, we ask you to keep our firefighters, our police officers, and our military personnel safe and out of harm's way. And we ask this in your name, God. Amen.
Deputy Chief, for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candida Blanca. Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item?
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for December 6, 2017, regular commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, unless you have any requests, I would like to go right into item 11A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11A. This is a presentation of certificates of appreciation to the sponsors of the 2017 Lighting of the Tree Ceremony by Mayor Mujina.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, the sponsors of Lighting of the Tree who made this event memorable were Barone de Parré, Public Supermarkets, and Greater Miami Caters.
Okay. Can you read the ones that are present here tonight so we can...
We have Greater Miami Caters, we have Barone de Parré, and is anybody present from Publics?
Okay.
No, but we'll send the certificate to them.
They were contacted, but I believe they had a scheduling conflict.
Yes.
Okay. So if our colleagues want to come forward, and by the way, thank you for coming, for this beautiful crowd that we have here tonight. Really, thank you for coming. Let's come forward.
Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of those at home, just as you move closer to the podium to greet Barone's beautiful entourage here of young princesses, they were part of the Lighting of the Tree Ceremony, and they have been for at least the past 10 years. Barone always donates the photography where parents can go to the studio and pick up the pictures. And of course, he always sends his beautiful princesses to the city to interact with our children, the community, and to make our event more enjoyable for all.
Want to come forward?
Little Hispanidad.
Tiny Hispanidad.
Tiny Hispanidad, teen Hispanidad, and pre-teen Hispanidad. So all of the age groups are very well represented.
I didn't get the memo to dress up with high heels.
No.
Well, I just sent the certificate of appreciation to Barone de Parré. The mayor of the City Commission of City West Miami recognized this sponsorship for the Lighting of the Tree 2017 event, and hereby extend our gratitude for continuing commitment and ongoing support to improve the quality of life in our community. They, uh, today they generated 10, 2018, on behalf of the mayor and the City Commission.
Before you go down, there was very much time for you to introduce yourself. Could you tell us your names?
Um, Miami, Detroit, Indiana. I'm San Antonio. I'm Andrea. I am from Australia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, beautiful.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right.
So this is a great, a great certificate of appreciation to Greater Miami Caters, because they help us, and they always cooperate with our parties in our festivities. And this is a certificate of appreciation awarded to Greater Miami Caters, the mayor and City Commission of City West Miami recognize your sponsorship for the Lighting of the Tree 2017 event. And hereby extend our gratitude for your continued commitment and ongoing support to improve the quality of life in our community. Today is, and, uh, 2018, Eduardo Mujina, Mayor, Candida Blanca, Vice Mayor, Ronda Rodriguez, Commissioner, Juan Blanes, and Luciana Suarez. There is, and we have to make a comment. That was very good. Now, now you smile, and you're here.
Thank you.
One more.
Share with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, Mayor, that concludes your presentations. Mayor, if you don't have any objections, and you want to jump to 11C, and the commission, you and the commission approve it, we do have representatives here on the issue of the life insurance renewal, if you would like to take that item now.
Absolutely. Can you read it into the record, please?
Yes, item 11C, discussion and recommendation on the life insurance costs for eligible elected and appointed city officials, department directors, city employees, and recommendations for new hires starting February 1st, 2018 by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Commission. There is a memo that is included in your pocket. It is dated January 5th, 2018, and it basically recaps the renewal of the life insurance component of our benefit plan, as the clerk just mentioned, for the various groups employed by the city, elected officials and administration. And this evening, we have two gentlemen in the audience who represent the new company that will be our insurance if you choose to ratify this recommendation this evening, representing Mutual of Omaha. The first individual that I would like to call is Peter Bouset. Peter Bouset is no stranger to the city. He's, uh, he was a resident of the city with his family for many years. His childhood, he spent here in the city. And when he grew up and became an adult, he ran for office here and served the city, sitting down where you're seated today. So, Peter, welcome back to the city.
Mr. Mayor, a point of privilege.
Yes.
I would like to tell the ladies that if they care to leave, they can leave or stay. It's just going to get very boring now for a long time. So, but if you guys want to, want to see, you know, government at work, stay. But if, if you all want, you all can leave at your will and pleasure.
So, Peter is the city's agent.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you for coming.
Uh, Mr. Bouset is the agent for the city as it pertains to the life insurance portion of our benefit plan, and he comes this, this evening to talk to you a little bit about the ratification. He's accompanied by Mutual of Omaha representative, and I want to say Reese, and I forgot your last name, Reese. Kerman. And Reese has been here in the past as well. And, um, Mayor, I think we, we should hear from Mr. Bouset first, and then we'll make a recommendation.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much for having me here.
Welcome, Mr. Bouset.
It's always a pleasure to come back to the City of West Miami. It's got a special place in my heart. Since 1963, I was here, so, and I sat where you guys have sat, so I also thank you for your public service and your time. I've always, whether I'm in any capacity for this area or not, I'm always looking after the best interest of the City of West Miami. And Yolanda has asked me to shop the life insurance around, and I have several years. And before, we were with UNOM, and as a result, we shopped it around, and we made recommendations to come up with a better plan and to save the city money. And for that, I know you have the packages, and I have brought Reese in from Mutual of Omaha, if you want any specific answers to any questions. But at the end of the day, when you get your packages, there will be certificates of which each one of you have your names on it, and we will be able to give it to you to show that you all have coverages, whether it's the police, the employees, or the commissioners. With that in mind, we also improved the contract to a two-year rate guarantee. I don't know if you want to go into a little bit of those features.
Sure, sure. And, and what we have here is, obviously, there's a trend in the industry, as you educated us on. The, the rising cost of insurance affects all employers. And in this case, obviously, the premium is slated to, to increase each and every time you shop around for a renewal. The Mutual of Omaha has offered the city a two-year rate guarantee, which we know exactly what we're going to need to budget for next year, and we know we're, we're not going to go beyond that threshold. So Mutual of Omaha has been around for many years, and, and they are a very stable company. And we are recommending that we, that we sign up, or that you ratify this. I've already signed the application, because our insurance with UNOM was, was expiring on December 30th, if my memory doesn't fail me.
Correct.
And because there was no commission meeting since early December, and the first meeting of the year is, this is today, I went ahead and I signed the application so that there would be no interruption in coverage. And so I bring it to you today for ratification, and obviously, they were asked to be here in case you had any further questions. There's only one recommendation, and, and we are looking into the future now. Because there is a, a rising cost with providing insurance, we are going to recommend that any new employee moving forward that wishes to obtain life insurance coverage, we can make it available to them, but they will have to pay the cost of the premium. And this is slowly but surely addressing some issues that we have long-term. It may be nickel and dime, right now, it may be a few dollars, but as the city starts to attrition into a new group of, of employees and new res, and new city employees that are going to be filling in our shoes as we move on, it, it should provide some savings in future years to the city. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Peter, I, I just have one question. In terms of coverage, are we looking at the same coverage that we have before?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
There was a voluntary and a basic. For that, let me bring Reese in, and he can go over the high-level plans.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. With Mutual of Omaha, the intent was basically to mimic or mirror the, the benefits that you had with UNOM. We did make a few improvements for you, but the amount of life insurance that you had with UNOM should roll over the exact same with Mutual of Omaha. No difference.
Beautiful. That's the only question I have.
Okay.
Any further questions?
I have a very simple question. I think I was reading, is this, is this price for, guaranteed for two years?
Yes.
For two years, the price of guarantee?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions from the convention? Okay. Um, I need a motion.
Motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Who made a motion?
Mr. Mayor, we need to read the resolution.
We need to read the resolution.
Please go.
Item 11D, resolution accepting the report of the city manager pertaining to the group life insurance for eligible employees and city officials, accepting the proposal by Mutual of Omaha Insurance Company with an effective date of January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2020, providing for a two-year rate guarantee, providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Motion.
Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Thank you. 5-0, item passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Bye.
By the way, we really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
You all.
You know, let me make a comment. You know what I'm sorry about, Mutual of Omaha, of Omaha? That building in Biscayne Boulevard?
Yeah.
That was in the beginning, during the 70s, where they built that building there, Mutual of Omaha, was the beauti, the best, beautiful in, in Brickell.
Yes.
Was, you know, the landmark in Brickell.
Yep.
I remember that.
And always on Sunday evening, the Mutual of Omaha.
Wild King.
You remember that?
Yes.
Now we have you. We have you now. Good, good. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Reese.
Madam Clerk, shall we go back to the original order of the agenda, or any other item that we should take out of order?
I think we should follow the original order, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
With item five.
In that case...
Item five, report to the city manager.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a written report. However, as of December 30th, I was happy to report, as of December 29th, that the city completed the uploading of the entire FEMA project. That has now been escalated to their reimbursement department. Hopefully, we can start receiving our re, our reimbursements for our debris pickup, which was the bulk of the expenses. And just as Mr. Penna and, and Mrs. Leon and I suspected, we have about a $1.6 million project. We estimated we would have $1.5 million in expenses. So we, we came very close to the expectations. We have one component left, which is the issue of damage to city property and the insurance. The League of Cities has advised that due to the high deductible of the city's policy, we may have to go after FEMA for reimbursement of these claims. So I will be working with our insurance company tomorrow regarding some additional information that we need so that we can get back to FEMA. But the issue of the, what we call the PWs, for the police department, the overtime that they call force accounts, the debris removal, the cutting of the hangers, everything else has been submitted. And I have to say that in each passing day, even after almost 35 years of employment, you learn something new every day. I started off not so techie. By the time I was finished doing the uploading, and, uh, it was, it was a tedious task, but we accomplished it, and we learned something new. So, um, we're hoping now that we are, we're expecting our, our reimbursement so we can pay down the credit line, because we are paying interest to the tune of about $3,000 a month on the credit line, and that is not reimbursable by FEMA.
Wow.
So...
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
So hopefully, the, the news, when it comes back, it's, uh...
Hopefully, the money will come back soon, and hopefully, Mr. Penna, now that he's back from his vacation, um, we can sit down and focus on the inventory for the damages to the city, and we can look to FEMA to, to seek financial assistance from them.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else on your report?
I'm sorry, sir?
Anything else on your report?
That concludes my report for today.
Okay. Next item?
Item six, report of the city attorney.
Do you have a report?
No, I, I do not have a report.
Thank you. Next item?
There's a, there's a rumor that the president had been quoted saying that FEMA does not have any more money.
It's just a rumor.
You did say rumor. Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to put that on the table so you would be aware of this.
Okay. But it's just a rumor.
It's just a rumor.
Okay. Don't pay attention to the rumor. Let's move forward.
We follow our attorney's lead. He says it's a rumor.
Yes.
So it's a rumor.
It is a rumor.
That can't be.
No official notification has been received.
That's impossible.
It's a rumor.
That's impossible. The government cannot ever run out of money, because all they got to do is either print it or take it from us.
You're right.
So...
Not unlike us that we run out of money, the government never runs out of money.
So that is a bad rumor.
Next item?
Item seven, report of the city engineers, none this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
Yes, I do have a report, something that I didn't make it to the agenda, but I think it's an important item. And the item is Request of Proclamation for the School of Choice Week. And this item, I would like, if you would like, Commissioner Rodriguez to co-sponsor this with me. This is, um, I'm sorry, you didn't get the memo, right?
Mr. Mayor, it would be my pleasure. I didn't get the memo, but just, you're, you're sponsoring it, it's School Choice Week.
Exactly.
It'd be my honor and pleasure to co-sponsor this with you.
You know how forward we are with education and so on?
Yes, absolutely.
For the kids, right?
Yes, absolutely. 100%. It's my honor and pleasure.
So I'll bring it to the table for your blessing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I have no further report. Anybody else on committee report?
Mr. Sir.
Okay. Next item?
Item nine, cities and presentations. No presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening. Item 11, under new business agenda items. Next item would be item 11B. This is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, calling for the election of mayor and two commission members elected at large, with the election to be held on Tuesday, April 10th, 2018, as provided by the charter of the City of West Miami, providing for designation of the canvassing board, providing for the closing of registration books, designating hours and places for voting, and establishing the qualifying fee for mayor and, mayor and commission members, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission. And mayor and members of the city commission pursuant to the charter, the City of West Miami holds municipal elections every even-numbered year on the second Tuesday of April, so which falls on April 10th, 2018. And before you, you have a resolution designating a canvassing board, which in, according to the charter of the City of West Miami, the city clerk is the designated canvassing board. The qualifying period for the April 10th, 2018 elections starts on Monday, February 19th, 2018, at noon, and ends on Friday, February 23rd, 2018, at noon. The registration books, which means that you have to be registered to vote, falls, the deadline is on March 12th, 2018. The election and polling location is the City of West Miami Community Center. The polling place will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And the qualifying fee for the mayor and members of the city commission is $50, and there is a state assessment fee of $12, which is paid to, to the state. And also, uh, I think that concludes my report. If you have any questions regarding the elections, this is the time that you can ask your city clerk.
Okay. Any questions for the city clerk?
No questions.
No.
Okay. Moving forward. Uh, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Can you call the vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Blanes, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Yes, and this resolution will be forwarded to the supervisor of elections, Christina White, actually, this evening, and for they, for the elections department authorization, and from that will publish the notice of election, and the, the whole procedure, election-wise, will start. So thank you for your vote.
Thank you.
And 5-0, item passes. Next item would be item 11E, which is a request for approval for presentation of key to the City of West Miami to be presented to Maria Diaz in recognition for her 30-plus years of service to the community, in her capacity of public affairs specialist for the Social Security Administration Office, for her dedicated service and for touching so many lives in a positive way. This is by Mayor Mujina.
Well, you don't have to say a lot about Maria. Maria Diaz is somebody that is dear to our heart, somebody that had lived in the City of West Miami for many, many years, and has many ties to the City of West Miami. And incredible that 30 years have passed, and she's retiring.
She retired.
Yeah. She has. So imagine that. What I'm asking here is, is just a small token of appreciation toward her career, helping out people, and so on, in not only our community, but the community at large. For those of you that know Maria Diaz, know exactly what I'm talking about, and I know some of us sitting in this commission feel the same way. So for that, I bring that to the table for, for your approval. And then, of course, we have to contact Maria Diaz for, for a date, that, that she will be available.
Mayor, the...
Yes.
When you, when you requested this item, I contacted the person that is going to stay pretty much doing the same thing for Social Security that she did for 30 years of her life, and I am advised that Maria is traveling. She will be out of the country until the end of the month, so she's going to get back to me to see if you can present her with this recognition, if it's approved. The first meeting of February, and also she promised to help me with some of her career highlights, what, what I was, and I think I discussed it with you, Mayor, is prepare a, a short video that Mr. Quintana is putting together. I've already asked him to start working on it. That includes pictures of Maria, as she developed in, in her profession with Social Security, and her life with her family here in West Miami, and her husband, who was a part of us for many years, and he's now deceased. So we're going to put a little presentation. If you approve it tonight, we'll ask Mr. Quintana to, to proceed with that. It should be noted that our Congresswoman, Eliana Ross Leighton, did a speech on the floor before the United States Congress, and devoted a minute, I believe, a minute or a minute and a half of her time to talk about Maria Diaz, again, a resident of the City of West Miami. So we have, we have a wonderful community with people who really make a difference in, in everybody's life.
Thank you.
And I know this is really dear to you, Commissioner Blanes, as well.
So Commissioner Blanes, I need a motion.
Of course, I'll ma, I'll make the motion, but I would like to say that, very briefly, that I have lost count the times that I have called on Maria to help someone, someone that has contacted me, and they are in a, in a really stressful, tough situation, dealing with family, members, and finances, and, you know, they have reached out to me, and immediately, of course, I've reached out to her, and, and she, in every single occasion, she has devoted the time to resolve the issue, she has contacted... She has contacted the person, either met with the person personally or on the phone, and she has resolved every single issue. And these are the little unseen highlights, and these are the greatest highlights. I'm sure that we're gonna see some really big ones, but these are the highlights of being able to help all these people, you know, at moments and times where they really needed help, and she was there to resolve the problem, no matter how big, no matter how small. So, I practically have lost count of the times that she's done that, just for me. And I am sure that we've had the same experiences, so...
Mayor, you finish?
Yes, I'm done.
I want to make a friendly amendment. You are presenting here to present the key to Maria Diaz. And I want to make a, I may call friendly amendment is to, the key is perfect, but I think I recommend to make a proclamation February 7th, which will be the meeting, Maria Diaz Day. Make a proclamation, proclaiming Maria Diaz Day. So, the key, I heard, I think would be...
A nice plaque.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, a plaque, yeah.
Something like you guys gave me, that I loved.
You got a plaque?
I got one.
He got one.
So, the key, and also the...
Yes.
Sounds good.
Matter of fact, terrific idea.
With that, I, well, you had to say it, the motion?
Motion.
Okay, now I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I will, I will communicate with you as to the day that she comes back, whether she'll be able to be here at the first meeting in February.
Okay. Next item?
Yes, next item would be item F, 11F, discussion approval of the 2018 Easter Egg Hunt event by Mayor and City Commission.
Can't believe it's here.
That time again.
That time again, oh my God, yes.
We just had this.
It's here already, pretty soon it's Thanksgiving, Christmas all over again.
Halloween is coming.
El pavo, Luciano. In preparation of the 2018 Easter Egg Hunt, we need to select a date, and we want to make sure that you are okay with this date. And this is something that Commissioner Blanes has been working on for years. And the beginning, it was really tough to get this off the ground, and now we're on automatic pilot. It's all about setting the date. Gotti, and Eddie, and I usually team up, and Juan's department, and the Police Department, and I think we do an outstanding job at putting the egg hunt together with your help. So, we need a date, and we were looking at the school calendars for spring break, and Easter Sunday falls on April 1st. So, the day before would be kind of busy for families that are making preparations for Easter, so we are recommending Saturday, March 24th, a week before, which is in between the parochial school and the public school recess, the Saturday before. And it would be pretty much the same thing, the opening of the park in the morning, like a little carnival. If we have sponsors, then they would come and bring their tents and bring their donations for the children, and just pretty much the same type of event that we've had in the past.
Isn't the school spring break that week?
Yes. We have, public schools are out one week, and then parochial schools are out the following week. So, what we did is, we looked at the calendar, and we chose an in-between, Saturday, in-between the two recesses. So, I don't know if that date meets with your approval, that's why we come to you, so that you can select a date.
Yeah, I have a...
We were, we were looking at March 31st. The problem with that is, that is the day before Easter Sunday. And so, it may be a little challenging for parents to, you know, to come and bring their kids to the Easter Egg Hunt. Usually, the day before Easter, people are preparing for family events and whatnot, so...
And that will be at the rec?
This year, we would take it back to the rec center, as we usually had it. Last year was at Cooper because of the 70th anniversary.
Okay.
Is that okay with you all?
Okay, so...
March 24th, right?
March 24th.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next item?
Item 11G, request by Commissioner Suarez to revisit training and conference dollars discussion without a full commission.
Commissioner Suarez.
All right, Mayor, this is a very simple question, and I think we have to, to look at the way we customary, we do these things. This money that was approved in the budget was approved with a full commission. And then, Commissioner Rodriguez brought back the issue because she was to, she had some, I think confusion about the money, what for, and what, the way it was used. So, we were, one meeting, we discussed about that. The next meeting, I was not present, I mean, it was not the full commission. Normally, normally, the customary things, when an issue is approved, especially like it was in the budget for the full commission, when one commissioner is not present, the item is deferred for the next until the full commission is. So, everybody has the chance to present their point. And for certain reason, that was done without the full commission, was not deferred. And that's one of the few times I see, an item like that is taken by the commission without the five members. Normally, customarily, we defer until the full commission is. Now, the second thing in this is that this money was set not for elected officials, was set in case, like we have been talking about the potable water, other things, that maybe people from public works, people from the administration that are not elected, have to travel to Tallahassee or Orlando, sometimes, different meetings about the public works issues. And that money is supposed to be used for that. Juan Penna is not an elected official. It was for that use. But, I was surprised that the money was divided between the four commissioners and the mayor. And really, that was not the purpose of this item. The purpose was for the reason I expressed before, was not for elected officials, was if necessary. If it's not necessary, we don't use it. But was in case, has to go somebody that is not elected official. Because we have the money to go to Tallahassee, we have representation. And this money was completely away from the elected official. Then I saw, when I came back, I was out of town, that the money has been divided, 750 for each commission, 1,000 for the mayor. But that was not the purpose of the, of the, of the money. I just want to clarify with all of you, that was something, that was something wrong. That was not the idea. And I'm going to make an example. Vice Mayor Blanca, we all heard her, she always donated her money, the representation she doesn't use to the Police Department. In this case, the $750 was allocated to her, she will, like she does with the representation, donated to the public, to the police. It's something, well, but in, but normally, normally, but normally, this is the way you do. And, and the, and the way this was presented in the budget was not for the elected officials, was in case it was necessary for any other person in the city. And I want to express this opinion, you understand that, and I hope in the next budget, if you understand, should be in the way I tell you. I don't want to discuss with you now if Commissioner Rodriguez present that, and if you approve, I don't, I don't want to discuss, you know, around. Because if we have a problem, we will use the money in a certain way. But I just want to make it for the record, that was, that was not for elected official, that was for in case public works or somebody else needed. That was my presentation and my revisiting in this case.
Thank you. Are you done, Commissioner?
I don't want to discuss with nobody.
No, no, no. If an item, I'm sorry, Commissioner, if an item is put on the agenda, that item needs to be discussed. That's the purpose of an item, to be in the agenda. So, it cannot be, unfortunately, a one-way street. Well, I have two items here. I was taking notes while you were speaking, and I have, number one, a different regulation about the full commission. When that item was brought to the table, and the discussion happened, I believe you were present during that meeting.
Yeah, we're not, no session was...
I did not interrupt you, please, let me, let me finish. Okay, you, you were not present, and for some reason, you, personal reason or whatever, I don't remember exactly, I think you walked out of the commission at that time, which at that time, if, and I'm going by my recollection, again, I could be wrong, but this is my recollection, and that could be confirmed by viewing a tape or whatever. I remember Commissioner Rodriguez asked our City Attorney, can we continue with this item? Because we have a member, and I don't remember you saying, by the way, can you, can we table this item because I have to go? No, you just said, left, and we asked if we could continue to the City Attorney. The answer was yes, and we continued to discuss the item, and we discussed it and came to that conclusion, and that's how it happened. So that's item number one. Item number two, in reference to how this money was placed in the budget, I really don't recall, and that's a question perhaps to the City Manager, that this money was designated for other than elected official, for emergency or other thing, I don't, because this money, it's, it's in the City Commission account. So, so perhaps I need a clarification from the manager?
The manager you have to clarify.
Uh-huh. So, those are the only things that I, that I wanted to clarify.
The, at the time the request came up, it was intended to be part of the City Commission budget.
Okay.
During the budget discussions. But there was nothing that only, other than we should have training and conference dollars allotted in the City Commission budget. And then, obviously, there were deliberations during the budget process, but we never specified that, until the conversation came up later on, and this resolution was passed by the Mayor and City Commission, how those monies were going to be used.
Okay. Anybody else wants to comment on the item?
I do, Mr. Mayor, and it's not so much on the item, it's how Commissioner Suarez, begin his, his discussion of this item. He said, "I was confused. I was never at any point confused at all about this item." I brought it, I was never at any point confused at all by the item that he presented that night. I simply was asking for clarification. Clarification, confusion, confusion, two completely separate thoughts. I was never at any point confused whatsoever.
Thank you for that. Okay? Anything else?
That'll be all.
Okay. Vice Mayor Blanca, do you want to clarify anything? Okay. Commissioner Blanes? Okay. So if there's no further discussion, we'll move right along. The next item is good of the order, anything for the good of the order? Okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Good night.